Okay, I think we're all set. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Good evening and welcome to our Tuesday, May 12th, special meeting of Michigan City Comic Council. Ms. Nyldup on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. So Ms. Nyldup, can you go with our first resolution by title only without objection?
A resolution by title only approving the extension of the mayor's executive order oh five twenty twenty extending the declaration of public health emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus. And this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick and co-sponsored by Mr. Don Presbleinsky, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Deitch, Ms. Jagus, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Paul Presbleinsky, and Mr. Simmons.
Okay, just to add what we are, what we're discussing here with this, this is an extension of the executive order placed by Mayor Perry. And this would extend it for an additional seven days after the normal extension. So that should be up on your screen to, for your review. Did any other sponsors have anything to add? Were there any other council comments on this resolution?
Sean, I have a comment.
Uh, Mr. Matt?
Okay, um, just to let, let everyone know, I will be voting no on this resolution. My logic is as follows. Right now, we are under the governor's five step plan. Our resolution that we passed before is totally gone, the curfew and everything that goes with it. The existing plan that we are voting on today is new. It is the new plan that the mayor came up with to replace the old one. And in his own words, it is a follow through of the governor's five step plan, which is, you know, the governor has the right to do that. I'm not going to dispute that whatsoever. But a few days ago, we did it. The only two exceptions that we deviate from the governor's plans are our limit on church attendance. We are limited to twenty five. And we've got something in there to the degree of church drive ins. And that's just for Michigan City only. It's not, you know, part of the governor's five step plan. This is what we will be extending by voting on this. If we voted, if we didn't vote on this at all, we would revert back to the governor's plan, which is what our plan is right now minus these two items, which is a twenty five person limit on churches, funerals and the like, which the government had, governor had before. But it deemed that those people now pastors, rabbis, priests and such are able to institute their own rule responsibly for the governors. But we'll be saying that we're putting limits on ours. So in, in my mind, within the bounds of the governor's five step plan, we've given every retail manager, every assistant manager, every full timer, every key holder in Michigan City, the trust and full faith to be able to implement the governor's orders on social distancing, on masks, and those are the things that alike. And the only group in Michigan City that is being scrutinized by us and will evaluate it after our seven days is over. And I, I have no idea how we will evaluate the performance of these pastors and priests and rabbis in their performance of their tasks in the same way where we're not going to evaluate B dubs or any other retail organization in the performance of their task. I just don't think that that is the only, to me, in my mind, that is the most responsible group. If I, if I had to ball up every church rabbi, priest that is in charge of their parishions and ball them up of a ability to follow through with the governor's orders, I would give them a higher grade than I would for every for-profit organization that has key holders and people that are under budgetary dictates to the jobs, if I'm making some sense. So I'm just against any edict that our body as a mayor, council, and especially just a councilman, would put on a church, no matter how miniscule, because most of our churches are doing great. We've got people in the community that'll, that'll criticize them, but the ones that I know are doing an outstanding job of handling their business in the way they see fit for their parishioners in the same way that we're giving every restaurant the ability to handle their business with their customers. So I'll be voting no because at the end of the day, it'll revert back to the governor's plan. And if we extend it, we're just extending that and then it will revert back to the governor's plan at that time. There will be no other extenuating deals. And the other thing is the, uh, the restriction on visitors or vacationers from out of town to quarantine themselves for seven days with us opening up Lighthouse Place Mall, I just find it a difficult thing, period. But my main objection is for any and whatsoever stipulation on churches and pastors when we're allowing key holders and full timers to execute the governor's plans. So I'll be voting no, just FYI. That's it, Sean.
Um, thank you, Councilman. I appreciate your comment. Uh, any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Uh, Council, Councilman Presbleinsky.
Yeah, uh, one thing I wish, uh, I, I would have seen in this resolution, and maybe it'll still come yet if we get another extension res- resolution, is, uh, folks that have to wear a mask when they go into stores. I think every store in Michigan City, uh, people should be required to wear masks when they go in there. Take, for example, if you go to Menards, uh, you have to wear a mask. And if you don't have one, then you can buy one when you walk in the front door. Uh, you go to some other big, big box stores and they don't require you to wear masks, although their employees have it on, they don't have them, you know, the people that are coming and going don't have it on. And, you know, I think we all understand that the biggest carrier of this is the, uh, the general public. And we have to do the best we can to protect people when they go into stores, protect the employees that are in the stores, and to protect ourselves when we go into stores. You know, if we're out on, if you're on the parking lot, you know, who cares if somebody has a mask or not? Because you're far enough away from everybody, that's not anything's going to affect you. But I think when it shows getting into stores, uh, some other close quarters that they've shown, like in Chicago, they've shown pictures of, uh, people jammed in the restaurants waiting for their food product. And they weren't even sitting, they were just standing in line. But I mean, everybody just jammed in there. There was no social spacing and nobody was wearing masks. So I think, uh, you know, and I'd appreciate if the mayor would think about that next go around. You know, we see where we're at with this whole, uh, whole thing and possibly add that to the, uh, to a new executive order. You know, if we want to be the leader in trying to prevent this pandemic from happening in Michigan City, which we're doing a pretty good job, I believe, uh, we have to stay on the forefront of things. Some people may not like it, the public may not like it, but that's why we're, that's why we're sitting right here kind of directing the public on what we think are the right things to do to save people, to save people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I'm, I'm voting no for another reason. I just simply think it is not strict enough. Simply the fact that basically we're just opening up, we're opening up the state. Um, and, and, you know, we have these stages where they're going to open stage, state. We're basically just opening the place up. And I am looking at things like the Center for Disease Control has come out with their own standards here as, you know, to, to, to open up proposed state and regional eating criteria, a downward trajectory of documented cases within a fourteen day period. State of Indiana hasn't met that. The Port County has not met that. And, and, you know, we don't even meet the Center for Disease Control standards to do this. And, you know, this is going on all over the country. Certain states are jumping ahead of others in terms of opening up. And my mind is strictly safety first. I have pretty active neighborhood groups that I communicate with, uh, mail. And what I'm getting back is they're concerned. They are concerned with, uh, safety first. I go out, I see people in masks and everything like that. But we are jumping ahead of what was actually given to our federal government in terms and even that moved down to the states in terms of the criteria to open back up. And we're jumping ahead of that. I made a, a, a post on Facebook not too long ago, and I said, uh, you know, even though we don't have, you know, a bunch of full beds, um, in the hospitals and ICU, ICU, uh, units right now, uh, I don't know if we should be taking these steps this early, um, in order to go and try to fill them up. Because I empathize with the businesses. I really, really do. But in my mind, from what I'm seeing and the, the, the information that is coming to me, like I said, I went to the, directly to the top CDC and we're in the whole state. We're not meeting those deadlines that are going to, I mean, those guidelines rather to open up. So in my mind, this, what we're doing is just basically opening up the place. Like, 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 uh, Councilman Mac said, you know, there's restrictions on the churches and, and things like that. But for the most part, it's open season now. So this is, you know, if this goes through, I just want to make you know, to the people here in Michigan City, please, you know, take care of yourself. Because in my mind, it just seems like we're just opening up the city. It's business as usual. So that's why I'll be voting no. I just can't see me supporting this going forward. I, I like what we had before and, you know, that is, that's, and that's my logic for voting no.
You too have a comment.
Uh, Councilwoman Jagus?
Yes, I also have a comment. I like that we have a resolution, but it's way too weak. There's almost nothing in it. And I don't see that really as a two most important things, seven days of quarantine, which doesn't even mean anything, and then the churches. So yeah, I, I agree also. I think the governor is moving too fast, but, you know, we can't change those orders. And I'm just sad that this order is not stronger.
Here, keep a look at this because mine stuttered for a second.
Councilwoman, uh, are there any other council comments? Uh, Councilman Tillman?
I also will be voting no, and my reasoning is again, as long with Councilman Dabney and Councilman Mack is that, um, it's too soon. Even though we get the information from CDC, uh, we've been asked numerous of times, what are the numbers? How many death, what is our death toll, uh, from COVID nineteen for Michigan City? We were getting conflicting numbers at one point. Now they're saying that we're at twenty seven deaths for Michigan City, not including the, um, Westville Correctional or Indiana State Prison. Also, the seven days restrictions for those that is traveling into the city from Illinois or our neighboring states, um, it's just they have fourteen days or probably even longer. And I say that, um, not just for those that's visiting or who may have property on the lakefront. I have, I have neighbors that have just moved into my area from Illinois, and they didn't adhere to the fourteen days. They're out and about. So now if we just restrict that to seven days, then no one probably is really going to adhere to the restrictions. So, and again, that's not only just putting us at jeopardy or at risk, our community, but then that's also broadening out for anyone else that's traveling into our city. And I was just curious as to the, um, the new executive order. As I was reading through it, it mentioned that, um, that the councils was axed to consent to the extension of the renewal. I had no communications or any outreach in regards to this until it was actually released to the public as well as, I'm sure, all the other council members. So now just being able to go through everything, um, this is probably something that could have probably been addressed a little bit sooner than later instead of now trying to go back through the information and weeding out or trying to discuss what actually should have been implemented into the executive order. It would have been nice if axed, um, what our opinions were or if we had any type of suggestions. Again, for the fifth ward and for the people, uh, within Michigan City, uh, not, I don't just speak for myself. I'm speaking as a whole. My concern is the citizens, the residents within my ward, the residents within the city. And I would not be in support of this today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other council comments?
Yes, I have a couple of comments there.
Uh, Councilman Presbleinsky?
Well, you know, I've heard these, um, different opinions on the executive order resolution. And has anybody contacted the mayor as per saying what their concerns? Um, I read through the executive order and, and I think that, one thing is that, uh, if you want to vote against it, then you're voting, uh, to, uh, open up Washington Park, open up Pullman Park. And, uh, I, I believe that those two parks should stay closed because we don't want people gathering down there. And, and, uh, we all know that people do have a tendency to gather in, uh, late in the evening in, uh, uh, Washington Park. So if you vote against it, then we could possibly end up with nothing to regulate our local, uh, facilities. And if we do have concerns, then we should, uh, make them known to the, to the mayor and, uh, um, put something back in black and white to, uh, amend this, to add to it. But as I said, we need to have something. We just can't, uh, say we're not going to have anything to regulate ourselves locally because we, we have to take this very seriously because of where, where we sit here on the lake in between the counties that have a lot of, um, cases and also in relationship to Illinois. Now, I don't know how you're going to regulate somebody moving in or coming in, coming to, the city with Illinois plates unless we facilitate something to they get contacted by the, uh, police department per se through or somewhere. But I don't know how to facilitate that because I'm not in the executive branch. Or if you have an idea to, uh, facilitate that to take it to the mayor. But by, by no means we should be voting against, we should be voting in favor and then making our, uh, making our concerns known to the mayor because I believe the date on this, when it was filed in the clerk's office was May seventh. So I believe we had time to contact, uh, the mayor if we had a lot of difficulties with it. Thank you, uh, President Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Simmons and then Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes. I was like done. I was hung up on the mask. I, everyone entering grocery stores or wherever you travel in the community, you should be wearing a mask because in the end, that's going to be one of the three things that will be still, uh, active. Social distance, wearing masks, uh, washing your hands, keeping them sanitized. And I was, and I was hung up on the curfew, but I see that's been eliminated. I wasn't in favor of a curfew. And the fourteen days, I was stuck on the fourteen days. I don't, didn't think we should go down to seven. And no, there is no way to police it. It's just a, it's, it's just a compliance thing. Please be in compliance because where you going, how? I, I, I don't see how you could possibly, but we're ju- just hoping everyone comply.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch?
I just had a question. Isn't it, um, it's my understanding that we couldn't, we can't amend this, right? So it's, is it all or nothing? And maybe Jim can answer that, Jim Meyer, Tony Meyer, because I, I didn't think there could be any changes to it after the fact. I think it's, it's all or nothing, if that's my understanding.
Uh, Councilman? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
You cannot amend the mayor's order.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding as well. I knew we could either accept it or not. So, uh, Councilman Dabney?
Now, um, I was listening to the Councilman, uh, Paul Presbleinsky there. He was talking about the, the beaches. I mean, I was in Washington Park over the weekend. I need an explanation on that. He said if we don't vote for this, we allow the beaches to be open. But I drove through over the weekend. And this, that just confused me. I was, it was, it was open this weekend. So he's saying that if we don't vote for it, we're allowing it to be open, but it was open this weekend already.
Of course it is.
It just, just confused me.
Uh, no, I mean, the, the previous order that restricted the, uh, access to the Washington Park, that expired and this new order did not contain measures to keep the, uh, Washington Park and the beach front closed.
Alright.
Thank you. The beach is open. I drove through myself this morning, so. Any other council comments? Councilman Mack?
Yeah, just, and that was, uh, what I was going to say, Councilman Dabney pretty much, uh, got that answer out. That everything we voted on last time, the curfew to extend. Last time when we voted, we didn't vote to actually do anything. We voted to extend the mayor's proclamation. And we did, and it was an emergency time and it was rough and we didn't know what was going on. And, and, and I agree with, with all of that. I was for the stringency of, uh, those measures. But we've learned some things since then. The president has a desire to open up the country. And our governor has put a five step plan in to open up the country. And in essence, that is exactly what we're going by minus those two exceptions. So what we're voting on here in essence, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the two exceptions to the government, governor's plan, which is our churches, uh, edicts and the, um, Chicago deal going from fourteen days down to seven. Those are really the only two relevant issues that we're voting. And if, if, if it doesn't pass today, the governor's, uh, existing plan goes into effect because we can't change that. Am I correct, Jim?
Correct.
Thank you. That, that's it, Jim. Uh, Sean, Mr. President?
Uh, uh, any other council comments? No other comments. Um, I kinda, I'm conflicted because I, I agree with the points that everyone has made in regards to why we should or why we shouldn't. And they all were great points and I, I appreciate all you guys' feedback. I know that the, the, the new additions to this order, uh, on top of what the governor's order is, will allow some further restrictions versus just letting everything open back up, which is if we, uh, exactly what happened, if we do, uh, vote this down, everything will just open back up as far as, uh, the five step plan that's in place by the governor. So, uh, I, I do, like I said, I do hear everyone's points and, uh, they were all well, well, uh, pretty good points. And I think we were to the point where we need to, uh, vote now if there are no, no other comments. Uh, Councilman Presbleinsky, you're muted.
Okay, now am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's amazing. You don't even touch things and things happen on these screens. But anyway, uh, and, and just getting back to what Councilman Mack was saying. Because I spoke to, uh, the pastor at Queen of All Saints, and I've talked into representatives at Saint Stan's. And they both said that they are working within the guidelines of what the city has, uh, given out. They know it's only for a couple of weeks. And the, the diocese is, is, is how the Catholic Church works. The Gary Diocese, they're putting their own plans together right now on how we're going to have social interacting in church and what's going to be taking place. So, you know, if, if we vote this down, then we're just going to be voting down any type of regulations or control you have in the church. And, you know, we're just going to open things up. And, and I, I think by the end of the month, uh, when this thing expires, then the Catholic Church, and they're working on it right now, they're going to have their own, uh, social distancing policies and other things that are going into effect. So, uh, I, I understand what Mr. Uh, Mack is saying. I don't totally agree with him, but, uh, the Catholic Church is looking at it and they're working, working with it. And they said that it don't necessarily care for it, but they're going to do what they have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Were there any other council comments?
So, so if we vote, uh, no, nay, then we're opening it, we're opening it up.
Uh, it expires on the, it would expire on the fourteenth.
Well, when, yeah, the, the day is the twelve.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but we'll be under the governor's orders.
Yes. If we were to vote no, we would not put any additional rules from us on the churches. And we would not change the seven day period for visitors, uh, to self-quarantine. Those are the only two issues that would change. And I have absolutely no desire to chime in on a priest, a rabbi, a pastor, or a, you know, and any of those people because I believe I hold them in more esteem and responsibility. And, and I've been a key holder and a manager and assistant manager myself. So I hold those in esteem and spot and response accountability too. But they're under pressure for profitability. These preachers and pastors and apostles, they don't need, uh, my assistance to do the job, especially if I'm not everybody else to do the job. If I'm allowing the governor's edicts to dictate retail stores, I don't see why I shouldn't be allowing the governor's edicts to dictate Michigan City churches. Nothing special about our churches that they need my opinion on if every other church in the state of Indiana is operating under the governor's. So I hope I clarified what I was saying at least.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Mack. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch?
Uh, I would just like to ask the mayor if he had any reasoning behind adding those specifically as, um, uh, additional restrictions, um, outside of the governor's. as additional restrictions outside of the governor's order? If there was any, any reasoning behind it that he could share? And that way, you know, everybody will know where he's coming from as far as those specific items. And maybe there's a good reason for it in doing that.
Uh, thank you, but thank you, Council Lady Deitch. Can, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you asked that question. I didn't want to project myself in because this is your meaning and it's your comment. You need to vote your conscience on this. The reason I put those two items in is because I felt, after reading the governor's executive order, that he was using religious services as kind of a sounding board or a test area to see how the virus would spread in groups of, in condensed groups of people. I'm, I did that to protect the people of Michigan City. And as, as far as, let me see, there's, there's a few things. The other thing was the quarantine on the Illinois people. Knowing that Illinois is the fourth most infected state in the nation, I understand that everyone has cabin fever, but I felt that it was a, it was a statement. I fully understand it would be very hard to enforce, but I wanted to make a public statement.